We're gonna go ahead and get started. When officially called this complaining commission meeting to order. Where you start from the roll call list.
Chairperson Johnson.
Here.
Mission number Miller.
Here.
Mission number Reddick. Mission number Reddick. Mission number Tucker.
Here.
Okay, uh, before we get down to new business, we're gonna discuss the approval of the minutes from our April first, twenty nineteen complaining commission meeting. I trust everyone here on the dais has had a chance to look over the minutes. Entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. And roll call please.
Mission number Miller.
Yes.
Mission number Renninger.
Yes.
Mission number Tucker.
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson.
Yes. First of all, I wanna just mention that there's some sad news today that a long-term city employee, East Ridge retired police officer, Charlie Snyder, passed away this morning. And just wanna ask that you all keep the Snyder family in thoughts and prayers. So, we right on into new business, first item on the agenda is gonna be request of Evan Green to rezone the property located at thirty-four hundred Ringo Road, tax map ID number one-six-eight-D dash C dash zero-zero-three, from C-two Commercial District to RZ-one-zero Lot Line Residential District to RT-one Residential Townhouse District.
Mr. Chairman of the Commission, uh, part of this property is currently as C-two or main C-two, that's gonna be the portion that borders Ringo Road, uh, which are going to plans to do two mixed-use units on the front, which will be, uh, two business units separated by parking lot and then another business unit, uh, beyond that, the, uh, then, I believe it costs for six, six to eight single-family RZ-one homes and also the back will be residential townhouse, which will look more like the traditional style of warehouses.
You can turn those around on the tip, we've got the call list. Okay, uh, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give the residents, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the residents an opportunity to, not at this time, it, Mr. Green, if you wanna speak a little about the development before I give the residents an opportunity to come down, you're welcome to go ahead and do it at this time.
Um, yes, we're gonna take property that's been sitting there as long as I can remember, um, I guess previously there was a, a trailer sales on that property and we're going to put probably mixed-use units, which is very popular in a lot of other areas of the country. So, the bottom will be office sits and upstairs will hopefully be owner-occupied for, um, people that, that live or haven't had, um, their short downstairs. So, architects, home builders, we talked to a interior designer about interested in space, hairdresser, people like that, small businesses, like to live in a nice condo upstairs and be close to their work.
Seems very nice, but we've been crying out for some new development up there in that area of Ringo Road.
We're planning on selling the townhouses, offering them so one that make them more traditional, uh, not like a townhouses that are cookie cutter, so they'll have a mixture of brick and siding and then the single-family houses will be, uh, twenty-seventy-hundred, two thousand square foot. That'd be a single, there'll be parrot dealers on the road, yeah.
Two in a ten residential units.
Ten residential units on the back side, I think they'll be, uh...
And a ten front side front.
Yeah.
Any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for Mr. Green? Um, you guys can have a seat, I'm gonna ask the residents, uh, what I'm gonna do now, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna open a public hearing, I'm gonna give the, the residents the opportunity to come and speak, uh, down here at the microphone, if you will, uh, when you come down to the microphone, please state your name and your address for the record and just keep it at a respectful three minutes, if you would please, and this is just for this resoning case right now, so we'll, we'll do this again as we keep going, so at this time, I'll open a public hearing, if anyone would like to raise their hand, sir. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Archie Courage, thirty-two, thirty-five, Archie Courage. I'd like something, questions, been answered, I'd like to know how the access could get in there and get off there because we drive out, so I'd like to make that turn on the Ringo Road to get out.
Okay. Uh, what, what we'll do is, uh, I'm gonna ask that the develop, developers just try to keep the questions in mind and once everybody's finished, I'll have the developers come back up one last time.
How's a sewer system gonna be? We've been in our house at Ringo Road on the Archie Courage Black Hawk for forty-seven years and I've had the WWTA three times to clean out the line of Black Hawk, there was a new ladder put in at Ringo Road. Well, the units be able to handle a sewer system and, uh, the problem there, maybe the tree line is, that ditch in there, I've had these ridges to kind of treat it out, they said that wasn't their responsibility, there's a lot of trash in there that is developed as it won't be able to follow through the drainage. And, uh, the garbage situation, you know, with Thomas, is, but the ten houses, where could there be a, uh, major, uh, collection and brought out a fire hydrant, there's one right in front of our house, if it didn't mean that the fire hydrant, will there be a fire hydrant collection? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can you, which one? Okay, oh, okay, uh, anyone else like to come, come forward to speak, okay? State your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Tim Blackhawk and we, we live in four oh eight down that avenue at East Ridge, we own, if I could borrow, through, that real quick, I can show you, real quick, we have the rental property and also the empty property that's across from the, of all the homes that was there, all this right here belongs to us, we own the rental property back on the back side, we went to the county and we got approval from the county and Kenny, I talked to you about this, and Kenny's come back there and we, oh, this is commercial in here and that's fine, they wanna go with lot lines and go with commercial in here, but like you said, I'd like to get with them, talk to them and see, because we've talked before about doing some commercial in here, but back here in the back, doing the same thing, RTZ, and seeing if we could get those lots split up, which would put in all houses instead of townhomes because, you know, we tried that and we had the largest turnout in East Ridge to refuse the, the home, the, uh, townhomes back then, it was the largest, that was fifteen years ago and, uh, but if we could see about, when the county came in, the last time, they came in, or whoever, East Ridge, they came in and they split that, this used to be all four of these lots here behind G M's were commercial property, well, I, I believe I showed it to you at the last meeting, they came in and they split that lot right there, so many feet off of Ringo Road and if we could get that changed, so because it's, they're directed across us, so if we could get this all done at the same time, I'd be glad to go down and rezone for, for, to, to get that part done again and have the RTZ the same as theirs on the back side, because we own everything on the back side of it too, there's nothing on the back side that we don't know, or who you've seen the road.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna get with me after this meeting, we'll set something up and go over it at the same time.
Okay, and then, because see, I don't want, because we were refused to do this and I understand nowadays, you know, we need the money here in East Ridge and I don't wanna build, build just a, a piece of junk, you know how we are, we try to keep our properties nice, we try to keep them clean and so, I'm off board, you're, it's almost what you did? Like I said, you're right beside us and it wouldn't hurt any, there's nobody here now that we're, that's against it, when we tried to do it, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't even get out of there, there was so many people in there, they were not all, I mean, they would not let us build townhomes at that period, I don't, and like I said, that's fifteen years ago, but now, you know, we need it instead of all the things, all the, everything else that we have, but that's ours and I'll get with you and I'll, I'll get with you also, if possible, but I don't have a problem with it, I said, and it, it impacts me basically more than does anybody in touch with the city, that if we still walk the homes years ago, then turn it into the long homes and then now it's just been there a lot, so I'd be glad to, and it would dress up back end of the road if you want people down there on that side, you know, for the better.
Thank you, thank you, sir, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I see none, I'm gonna close the public hearing in the resoning case, this nobody's on the case and I'll give the, I'll give the developer another opportunity to come up. Sure, yeah, yeah, I definitely wanna answer his questions and the other gentlemen's as well.
Joseph Ingram, Ingram Door and Associates.
If you'll speak a little closer to the mic.
Joseph Ingram, Ingram Door and Associates. Uh, let's see, the first one, access, so we would be coming in the existing driveway that's already out there, it's kind of a shared driveway, I think it actually is owned by this property, so that, that access would be...
Which driveway are you talking about?
This, this is here.
Okay, then.
Today's worst day for currently.
Okay, but you're gonna open another to the immediate west?
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be no other access.
No, 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 not there, does that, right there?
That does not tie, that does not tie.
This, this ties to your future, um...
Okay, so that does not go out onto Ringo Road?
No, no, the only access will be from...
That's...
We could have one outside of us. So that's the, the access, the sewer, our plan would be to lay a new line along that access road, we're actually, not there, but lay a, lay a new line because Black Hawk's a problem, so, uh, we talked to WWTA about capacity, Kenny, Kenny's aware of that, so we're, we're, we've already, we've already talked about capacity out there, we lay new lines of the Ringo Road line, so we'd have to do a tap there, but the sewer's actually kind of in the parking area, so we wouldn't be actually coming in the highway. Uh, let's see, fire, chances are, we're gonna have to set a fire hydrant in the back, we'll have to extend the water line, we'll probably have to provide a set of fire hydrants, we'll be too far away from a fire hydrant and access and...
The drainage.
I'm hoping this'll fix it.
Maybe, he's right back there, it's, it's a, it's a mess and that's kind of a function
of it, it's, nobody's been out there and everything in the world is dumped out there, we gotta clean up and clean up along the ditch, we think we can probably enhance that situation, so that's, I think that was it, sir, the commissioners have any questions?
I think there was a question about garbage and waste, how that would be handled, but there'd be like a community dumpster or...
There's, there, there are legal lots on these roads, so we would probably, the, the city would, would probably come service down the access road, they're all, there's no, it's not gonna be a private drive, yeah.
Well, no, this, this drive here is a private, but they all have legal fronts on Black Hawk or... We're not planning dumpster, we're, we're hoping the city would...
Well, that's, that'd actually be our plan, we'll have that dumpster for the, for the commercial points, of course, but...
How are you gonna be able to service?
To you?
I need to be, how are you gonna be able to service your waters? The residential jail, if you're not on the private road.
But they're, they're access from a private drive, but they're legally, they're, they're addressed on Black Hawk.
We have, we have a, a type of system where we have trash receptive, which is picked out and called kind of like a one-on-one van, they're not gonna be able to pick those up. Now they're gonna get, are the residents of those first four or five that butt up against your stormwater retention line, how are you going to get their obstacles out on the Black Hawk?
The, the city would come down the private drive, they, they do, and they've done it on, they've done plenty of developments, they come down the, the private access drive.
If it's built to city specification, yes, private drives are very rarely ever, ever built to, uh, city specifications, I'm not gonna, you know, we go down that road with those heavy-weighted vehicles and tear that road up, we're not gonna pay citizens, we'll be responsible for paying for it, so it's gotta be built to city specs.
The road will be paid to city specs, the, the problem is we won't get a turn at the end, like a, a full, full...
How do you, you have them backed out?
I mean, we assume that they get back, we live a turn every way.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's obviously a part of the, of the development that we'll actually have after the zoning process, because we have to make sure that depending on what they're doing, they still got the fire protection stuff that they have to put in, obviously as mentioned about the fire line and the fire hydrant, one amendment, maybe five hundred feet, if they're sprinkled, then we can adjust that accordingly, T-turns are allowed if they're sprinkled, so there's a lot of different places what to do after we get past the reason for it, or different places to do.
I just wanna get on the record, if you're gonna build that road to city specification, I've been doing this a while, I don't wanna see real enough of the city specs that happen, I don't know, they honestly, we did those, those, those trash trucks will tear that up in a matter of three or four years.
We can, we can pay that road to...
That's all a mess, yes.
I'd like to do concrete.
Depends on what the cost of material is, or if it's not successful.
Right now, concrete, concrete and asphalt are running about square meters each other. Uh, and then finally, I just wanna, this is on C-two, so this is really a down zone, we're asking for a down zone, we're going from, we're going from commercial to residential, so we're, we're really, the city wants that down zone, so I don't want people to, you know, this is, this could be a gas ditch under the, under the current zone, this could be a lot of things, or it's a, and I think everybody knows what the UPG homes has done at East Ridge, I think this is just another, I mean, same, similar, and then maybe something a little different, but it's been similar, things like this on the other side of town, so...
We also worked some additional lots, okay, because I started focusing on this in East Ridge, kind of a lot of the areas, so we've got three last year, they're starting off and this development.
Questions, ma'am?
Questions, sir?
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, I agree, uh, it, it could be a new, a, a long list of things that we prefer not to see there, I agree. So, uh, do I hear a motion in regards to the rezoning located at thirty-four hundred Ringo Road?
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion, questions? And roll call please.
Mission member Miller?
Yes.
Mission member Renninger?
Yes.
Mission member Tucker?
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson?
Yes. The, uh, Ms. Approving, and we'll go in front of counsel for final approval, so, the next item on our list is gonna be the request of Jay Desai to rezone the property located at five-two-nine Froley Road, tax map ID number one-seven-zero-G dash A dash zero-zero-six-zero-two, from A-one Agricultural District and R-one Residential District to RT-one Residential Townhouse District.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct, uh, this, uh, this property was previously agricultural, been agricultural for a number of years, uh, to the north is actually vacant property to the east, a single-family detached residential, to the south is a single-family detached residential, and to the west is, uh, obviously the Catford Park and Recreation. The southern portion of this lot actually borders, uh, Mr. Desai's other townhome development, and so he has requested to use, um, the A-one, R-one portions of this land to residential townhouse.
Uh, thank you, Kenny.
Is there not a, uh, single-family residential development that's gonna be built just over there, about a hundred and thirty-seven homes?
Uh, Mr. Desai, if you wanna say a few things about the development?
It's only one, uh, um, basically just great from the course from the, uh, down lots, you know, just like the next door, I mean, this gets us into the, when I have and it'll be a gated, gated community and it's a private road. And all the homes are E P B smarted, also, you know, they're all on one level, stone run, one side, and similarly what I have right now, on six fifteen property.
So, Mr. Desai, this is gonna be similar to what you currently building, regardless of these things?
Yes, but in addition to that, we might be offering three bedrooms instead of two, as our people have requested, uh, three bedrooms instead of two, these are what we have right now, those are two-bedroom, two-bath, two-careroes, and on the next one, we might offer three bedrooms, two and a half bed and, uh, two careroes. The entrance is on the, uh, Froley Road and it could be a subway.
Does, uh, any of our commissioners here have any questions for Mr. Desai before a public hearing?
Yeah, question, uh, on the, Kenny, on the backup information, first map that we have here, those total sixty-two units, one move just handed out is up to seventy-seven units.
It's seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven units?
Yes.
And then one question is, you're adding seventy-seven units, we're adding another hundred and thirty-seven or hundred and thirty-five coming in super family homes, that's over two hundred units to be built there, Froley Road gonna be able to handle that? I lived there for six months at the end of Froley Road, I can tell you, there was many mornings where I sat there waiting on that traffic signal, the long line of eight to ten cars, so now we're adding another two hundred bowling units, single-family bowling units in there, we're building three bedrooms, we're talking about large, we're talking about two cars, we're talking anywhere from three hundred fifty to four hundred, additional cars driving that road. I'm just saying, has there been any kind of traffic study done on this at all?
I don't recall the, the traffic study, they, they, they did anything?
They did?
Yeah. I just, they're not, they're not near the capacity signals, we're still, we're still milling, you know, a little bit of the surface.
No, I love what you're building out there, and I think it's great, the townhouse development is, is completed, your new one that, uh, I saw going construction a couple years ago, it's almost done, isn't it?
Yes, yes, almost, I saw it, it's not built all, beyond what...
It's getting there, it's getting there, okay, and just a concern, that's all, that's all, sir.
I'm assuming the pond is four, one foot up, one foot down, uh, from the elevation, do we have any idea how deep that pond is actually?
Otherwise, it might twenty-fifty, in the next, next property down, right? It'd be, it'd be, it'd be a match to the one next door.
How many acres is that on the pond? Twenty? Is it eight? The one for this person?
Oh, no, this, this one did everything.
This was made five.
Any other questions for Mr. Desai at this time? Thanks, sir. Okay, at this time, I wanna open up a public hearing for the rezoning case for, uh, five-two-nine Froley Road, uh, again, if you'll just raise your hand and I'll call you down here to the podium, sir, in the back, if you'll, uh, just state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's Mark Roden, I live five-twenty-two Froley, and, uh, I might be a little nervous, I don't know how to get you to talk in front of crowds, uh, my concern is the water runoff from, uh, Harris Hills and so forth, uh, coming down Froley and it goes across the street and empties into that, uh, lot, uh, acreage, and, uh, I, I've seen rivers come through my yard twenty feet wide and it's, we got a problem now, and if it's clogged off, we're gonna have a whole big, big problem, uh, we've had sewer backup because of that, water runoff before and, uh, wouldn't want that to happen again, I mean, they, they, the sewer company did work on it and fixed it, hadn't had that problem since, uh, but we haven't had rain like we've had from several years ago either.
I agree, we, you had a lot of rain this summer, or...
Yeah, but it, but it didn't, it didn't rain that hard like it did, uh, four or five years ago.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there any other residents that would like to come down and speak, sir?
I'm Dave Mansfield, excuse me, sixty-nine fifteen Wake Rock Drive, remember that Froley Road is also access to, uh, the rear side of, uh, the park, I think it's pretty heavy at times when there are events going on at the park, then you're adding all of these other, uh, homes, you take, how many, how many spaces was he talking about?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven times two, two cars, a lot, a hundred fifty-four, this goes on and on and on, so that's my real concern, also, are you the same developer that, is he the same developer that cleared out that space in front of the church there?
Yes, sir.
And it's sitting there?
Yes, sir.
Is this job, this is gonna be finished, do you believe it, do you like to know the other? I, I, I'm still concerned about traffic and I would have somebody check, same as you, sewer is essentially...
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Is there anyone else?
Tommy Hitchens, I live at five-thirty-two Froley Road, been there forty-six years, moved in a week before the dig was done, and I remember the property that he wanted to redo, uh, that was a lake, I mean, it was, it came to the edge of Froley Road, uh, the water did, police came by at three-thirty in the morning, and that was, because it's seven hundred miles, another sixty-eight feet, which it never did, I came back the next day, it never came across Froley, and I don't think it's rained that hard or that long since, but I've seen it pretty high over on Jerry's property that he wants to, to rezone, um, that property still floods in the back, uh, I've seen it like a lake back there all the way to the creek, um, he's gonna have to haul in an awful lot of dirt to build that up, if he does that, where is that gonna throw that water, is that gonna throw that water on us, because last year, um, my name's, and I had the letter that I had to have flood insurance because I had a small home that we run, and, uh, I had a friend who was a surveyor come out and re-surveyed and it was, it was not in flood zone, but we had to go to the trouble to, uh, send all the paperwork to FEMA so that we wouldn't have to do that, uh, I don't know how many other people on Froley Road were recently... Uh, I don't know how many other people on Farley Road were recent. They said they read through the maps. Well, what's that gonna do? Are they gonna come in and read all the maps again? Uh, when all this is done, where is that water gonna go? That usually piles up in the factory there. I've noticed that there's more water going down on, um, uh, the drag strip and on the west beatway than there used to be. And I could only assume that it's coming down, uh, the creek now. So my, my concern is where's the water gonna go? There's a big ditch that comes from Harris Hills down the side of my property. And on a hard rain, that ditch, ditch gets full. And my nature guard, uh, stands four inches deep in water now. And my property is just a little higher than his, so I don't get all that water. But my concern is, you know, where's the water gonna go? How are you gonna handle that? How are they gonna handle that? Uh, I, I do have a concern about the traffic. I remember when he used to have the service down at the, at the, um, um, Camp Jordan, they would take us ten, fifteen minutes to get out of our driveway sometimes. It's helped since they put in the new road. But there's still times that it backs up like one of the other gentlemen said. So those are two concerns that I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. We had, uh... Does anyone else have another hand, I believe?
My name is Nancy Whitmire. I live at three-two-five Shell Drive. I come down Farley Road every day. And I too am concerned about the extra traffic. I live up two heels. How about the utilities? How's our water gonna be affected? The, uh, water pressure, uh, with all this development going on with the houses and the townhouses? You know, we have to consider our utilities too.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Whitmire, thank you. Is there anyone else? I see none. And I'm going to, we got one more on the map? Okay, I'll, at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing for residents. And I'll have the engineer to come up and maybe he can answer some of these questions and address some of his concerns we have.
A treat, a doubleheader. Joseph Anken, Hebron Building Associates. We hit the plan for the property next to our residence, just to continue the mission. Mr. Desai's already done with the townhouses. So first, the stormwater that's in the existing creek that comes across the horse pond, we're aware of that. We've actually put off it and we're buffering it and just let it continue on. We won't, we won't indeed, we won't, we won't get in the overbanks on that, that creek, we'll just let it go. We're gonna be above it, so if that, that needs to be approved at the road. If that's some sort of public response down the road that the exup's gonna flooding, we'll have all the conveyance in the world available to get it to Chicken Mucker Creek. So I don't think, I don't think we're gonna cause a problem with that sewer. WTA's obviously worked on this, but this is not the moratorium. There's no moratorium in this particular area. So, and this is, there's that big pump station that we go to. So we're gonna tie, with, with this, it'll let Mr. Desai tie directly to the line that feeds to the pump station. And then, then out of there, we, we have visited WTA about capacity for both projects. And there is capacity out there, and that's, that is not the moratorium area. Talking about flood, you know, flood plain, so yes, we're gonna, we're gonna bend, take, do the same thing. Great big ponds, so we take a lot of dirt out to bring the top up and the front up. So we'll be moving, filling the back and then take, and building these, these ponds in the back. So we're gonna do what, we'll, we'll, we'll complete that, then we'll complete a Loma. Or a letter map amendment, we'll amend the, the flood map. So we'll come back in and amend the flood map on all of those properties. We'll get FEMA to approve a new Loma. We just, we just did a Loma this week in the city of East Ridge. You know, we've kinda, there's a lot of them. For people that are in the flood plain, the maps did change two years ago. A lot you might be in that aren't really in. So, but we're, we're kinda used to doing that. We're not, we don't think we're gonna, it'd be really hard for us to, to cause any upstream issues because we're on the creek. So we don't think we're gonna cause any flooding for upstream people. We, you know, the Chicken Muckers had a lot of work. And we're kinda thinking with, with what we do on the overbanks, we'll actually increase the conveying. So we shouldn't really have a rise in the, in the flood zone much, because, you know, this pond's not gonna, it's not gonna slow water down. But I think, the last one is, I don't really have a feel for water pressure out there. Because we get, you know, we get a letter of availability. We don't, I'm not privy to what their network calculations are, so I can't really, I can't really address that. That's not, you know, that's, we have to talk to utilities about that.
Good. Any questions? Ethan? John? Okay, thanks, sir.
Half of the property...
Yeah, go ahead.
Half of the properties is in floodway, in the back portion. We cannot build anything on it, we cannot touch it. But we can excavate it and put the dirt on the back to the front. So that will give more things for the water to flow. And it will not affect any of us in the front. That's easier to do.
All right. Thanks, sir. Okay, uh... Do I hear a motion to, uh, in regards to the rezoning of five-two-nine Farley Road? And I'm open for discussion as well before the...
You know, I'd swing you out, and I, I would like, it, it, to me, it's a good-looking development. However, I am concerned about the traffic. And I would like to see that traffic study before I could move forward on this. I'd like to see that, that document. I just wanna be sure there's some capacity here. Again, talking with this development and a new one coming, it's already been approved. We could be talking three hundred fifty to four hundred cars a day, more, utilizing that Farley Road. That section of Farley Road, you already have damage around that curve. There's already road damage around that curve. The infrastructure is part of the way right there around that curve. That was due to, well, construction alone. It's only gonna get worse. It's only gonna get worse. And most people are gonna go out Farley Road to Ringel Road. They're not gonna go all the way around to get out through, yes, or... So... I'm like, I, that, that's just my concern.
Kenny, wasn't there a traffic study of the Farley-Ringel intersection recently? Do you remember anything about that?
There was, yeah, Myers and Associates did that, but I don't have that documentation in front of me.
So I believe that where we're at was, even if we do address any of the flooding concerns, and that it does not appear to be an issue, uh, then there's still a traffic, a huge traffic concern, I think, that... That we're having. So, so we gotta overcome that objective, so if it's...
Sorry? Oh, that, we can roll it one more? Okay, like I said, it's, it's, it's a good-looking development. I like it. However, I'm concerned about the traffic. I wanna make sure that the traffic can be accommodated. I'd like to see that study. I have never seen a study. A hundred and thirty-seven units that were proved, and it was all done before I came on board. So I don't, uh, I don't ever remember seeing that. I'd like to see some kind of traffic study on this. My opinion.
Could we have Mr. Desai develop, come back?
Mr. Desai, do you mind coming up here, please?
It seems like with listening to the folks, um, the major concern, the traffic, the traffic study, how much time would y'all need to, uh, do a traffic study from there?
About thirty days.
If one was done, all we could do is do the update to it.
We can use that, uh, what is done for the water tower.
That's what I'm saying. If you updated that, that could take less than thirty days.
Yes.
And you would be able to do something like that?
I'm not a traffic engineer.
Oh, okay.
Not only engineers, I'm a engineer.
I'm sure it was, uh, with a, with a good traffic engineer.
One of my best friends is a traffic engineer that will, you know, I've asked him, look at this. And I, I'll just be honest with you, he looked, he said, he said, it's, it's gonna trip any triggers on the traffic, I'd say. But we bump it in.
That's all, that's, that's what I'm looking for, yes.
So I don't see what's going in the direction of either approving or denying it. We just wanna maybe roll this over to the next planning commission meeting pending the review of the traffic study. How's that sound?
We can get the traffic study later.
I would make that motion to roll it over to the next meeting and give us time to get a updated traffic study.
A second.
Okay, we got a, a motion to roll this over to the next planning commission meeting pending the review of the traffic study. And we got a second. Any other questions? Several calls, please.
Ms. Member Millard?
Yes.
Ms. Member Renninger?
Yes.
Ms. Member Tabel?
Yes.
Chairperson Chauncey?
Yes. Thank you, John. All right, uh, next item on our agenda is gonna be the request of Yogi's Primo Promo to rezone the property located at four-zero-two South St. Marks Avenue. Tax map ID number one-five-seven-zero-dash-r-dash-zero-one-five from R-one residential district to R-one office district.
I am April Center, member of Yogi's Primo Promo. We're currently at four-zero-two South St. Marks Avenue. Do you have the correct number, parcel number? But you have the wrong address. We're here for four-zero-three South St. Marks Avenue.
Which is, which is where the sign is. Okay.
Yeah, the address, I think, is just that type of...
It's right behind the, right behind the nationwide office.
It's right beside it.
Right behind it, going to...
South, yes. Well, it was right next door to it, yes, but yes, behind it, we said.
For, for the record, we are here to look at a request to rezone the property at four-zero-three South St. Marks.
Right.
Okay.
So, uh, just the address is wrong on this.
And the usage is gonna be to, uh, have the ability to park.
And more office space, or out of, or, yes, sir.
And then, as you all know, the buffer, landscape buffers and stuff, they require, depending they have work in the works.
We're already currently taking care of the landscape, being prepared right now, just being...
How large is the building? How large is the building?
Ways.
Square footage wise?
We, we put on the, uh, plan, it's about two to four hundred square feet.
The building's twenty-four hundred square feet. That's larger than any of the houses on that street. Most of those houses on that street are about twelve, thirteen hundred square feet. Then one crosses the street, or one cat quarter, or one viewed itself. They're all small houses, small lots.
Well, most of them have upstairs. We were gonna go to this point floor, not have them upstairs.
It's a long lot.
It's a really skinny lawn, huh?
It's a long watch, you're correct.
Yes.
But the width is, is, is narrow.
Kenny, I see there's no, there's no minimum square footage on the, for the building size or, or maximum?
No, we just, we just gotta make sure, so even if the zoning is approved, we still have to make sure that it meets all the infill requirements. So like I say, this is part of the due diligence, and, and as zoning is approved or not, however, we still have to go through the, the development phase and processes, probably as we, you know, require. Those are issued based on further approvals through our offices and offices.
Your business establishment, can you give us an idea of what type of business that is?
Yes, sir, we do add special needs and promotional items, so I...
Okay, so you're more professional office. You've not been involved with retail sales or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Do they make nice t-shirts? And o- other things? Lugs, cups, Yeti coolers, personalize your yoga, or logo? Among other things. Um, any, anyone have any questions, uh, right now for the applicant? Okay, um, thank you.
How tall is this expected to be?
Sorry, April, could you?
I'm sorry?
How tall is it expected to be? Is the RPA staff recommendation saying building height has the potential to conflict with FAA regulations? Does that mean just if the zoning has the potential? I don't see where that came from either, but it's in the notes from RPA. And I thought it's gonna be an awfully tall twenty-four hundred square foot building.
No, I don't, we didn't put any, give it off the heights, and we're still just kinda working on that.
That should've been on the one case report.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't lay on that and never leave it all over.
All right, thank you, guys. Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing for this rezoning case. Is there anyone here, any residents that would like to come forth to speak either for or against the rezoning of this property? Raise your hand, sir?
My name is Jim Olson, working south of, you know, building there. With them building, building there, uh, the lot is less than ten thousand square feet, which I was denied, um, not denied, but I was told that each lot had to be ten thousand square feet for, uh, putting a house on. So, you know, and I don't, it doesn't matter to me if they build there or not, but, you know, I would like to have the same courtesy on a, on a, on another lot that I have that's moved at less than ten thousand feet. But there is a minimum in the city, yeah.
So basically, whether the lot was a lot of record? Is it a lot of record? So if it was a recorded lot, um...
It's a recor, it's a recorded, it's a full, it's a full lot, I want it to subdivide it.
So that's, that's where it becomes an issue. You can't create your own hardship. So this is a non-subdivided lot. So if, if you subdivide it, then, then you're creating your own hardship. And that's where it's hard to get appearance requests, because you can't create your own variants.
Okay. Yeah, because I was wanting to put another house on and stuff, and if, you know, things are less than ten thousand feet, how can I not put a house on?
Yeah, I'd be happy to look at it if you submit it to our office. And then we can walk you through, um, the process. And then also explain to you how it works, the relation to subdivided property that, um, that fall below the, than the commercial.
Good, because I'm all for development in that area, especially commercial, since I'm on level. I have a house on level that you'd probably like to, along with a couple of the buildings that are on level, to change to commercial. So, uh, with Yogi, starting that process, hopefully, you know, going to Anderson, it seems like, you know, with the funeral home and, and people that are on the south front, it's, you know, it just seems conducive to start looking at everything as a commercial entity in that area.
Yeah, we're looking at office, not necessarily commercial.
Well, o- office, because we do office.
Well, just we're getting that buffer between the interstate and the back of the residential.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? I see none, I'll close this public hearing. And do I hear a motion in regards to the rezoning for four-zero-three South St. Marks?
Make that motion?
Second.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Member Millard?
Yes.
Ms. Member Renninger?
Yes.
Ms. Member Tabel?
Yes.
Chairperson Chauncey?
Yes. That item is approved and it will be going before city council for final approval, thank you. Last item on our agenda tonight is gonna be the request of Chip Scott to rezone the property located at tax map ID one-six-nine E-dash-D-dash-zero-zero-eight from C-two commercial district, O-two office district, and R-one residential district to C-four plan Commerce Center district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is gonna be the rezon of sixty-one point three three acres, um, to C four Commercial. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about the rezon of a hundred acres. This is only rezoning the sixty-one acres within the city of East Ridge. And of that sixty-one acres, uh, approximately, I don't wanna speak for the engineers, forty or so are considered added to the floodway.
Thank you, Ken. So we have a, we're gonna get the applicant or the engineer here to, uh, tell it?
Jeff, would you like to come up? Just kinda give an overview of the project?
Who's the stage name for the record, please?
Jeff Slights, Ace Engineer. Uh, basically, uh, you're correct, about forty acres of the sixty acre site is outside of the wet, or outside of the floodway. And so the intent would be to develop the, uh, that southern portion of the site.
All right, and, and, Mr. Sox, if you don't mind, could you kinda go over, um, some of the entities that you have to work with before the development even occurs?
Yep. Uh, so right now, there is a conceptual plan that was put together. Um, you know, it's our job to basically take that plan, go through the, the due diligence phase of the project. So, uh, right now, we are in the process of doing determinations on the site to determine wetlands, to determine any waters of the state. We have a meeting set up with the Corps of Engineers on, I believe, Wednesday this week. Uh, and that will kinda dictate how the site is eventually developed.
I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on the process. As I've said a few times, when you go through the rezoning phase of any parcel, that's usually one of the initial phases, uh, as part of the due diligence. And just because a property gets rezoned, doesn't mean it gets developed. It's still have a lot of processes that it has to go through, um, in order to be issued those, those permits for construction.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Sox?
I do. So it's my understanding that forty acres that are in the floodway will not be developed with any type of building or structure?
Uh, so we're in the process of doing, we're about to start a flood study. So the process is first that we need to assess the, the site, find out what's there. And then we work with TDAK and with Corps of Engineers to confirm what we found. So they come out and do a concurrent, uh, where they look at what we flagged and what we found, uh, and they determine what's there. The only area in the floodway that, that may be developed is we have a section of the floodway right where, uh, North Max Smith Road comes in from Spring Creek. Uh, so we're doing a flood study too, and what we need to do is a, what's called a no rise strategy. So we need to do a flood study and ensure that if there's any fill that goes in that one area just to get the road in, then it is offset so that there is a certification that it is not gonna be adverse impacts of properties upstream or downstream and something. And that's just part of the due diligence phase. Aside from that, that, there's, there's no intent to put any buildings or anything like that in the floodway.
Thank you, Mr. Sox. Thank you.
Guess I'll be back.
We'll bring you back. Okay, at this time, I will open a public hearing and, uh, just ask that you come down, raise your hand, come down, and, uh, just keep it at a respectful three minutes so we can have enough time for everyone to have an opportunity to speak. So, uh, at this time, just raise your hand, I'll, I'll call you down there one by one.
Hello, I'm Jane Sharp. I live at sixty-one twelve Schofield Avenue. And, um, my family purchased the house that, uh, I'm currently living in in nineteen fifty-three. At that time, the area in question was clear cut in anticipation of additional development in that area. And, um, they have now spent sixty-five years looking at projects. They come and go and have not been able to develop anything on that property. I will say I'm not opposed to the property or to the development that they are proposing. We fully expected that area to be developed when we moved in here sixty-five years ago. Uh, however, they've not been able to do anything in that amount of time. And so my initial question was, what has changed that now makes that area viable for building? The kind of project that's being discussed? And from what I understand, there's still a number of studies that need to be done that, that will make that determination. My second area of concern is Spring Creek Road. It is a two-lane road at the entrance that, um, they're expecting use, to use as a primary entrance, which is also in front of a hospital. So there will be ambulances who have a certain urgency in being able to get, deliver their, you know, patients to that. So I, I have concerns that, uh, there needs to be substantial improvements to Spring Creek Road, not just because of people coming from Rainier and making a left-hand turn and macking up traffic that will, that might literally put someone's life in danger if they are in an ambulance. But, um, also with the work that's being done on twenty-four and seventy-five, anybody who knows Chattanooga at all knows they can get off at exit one, come over to Spring Creek Road, go over Spring Creek Road and get back on the freeway and avoid the bottleneck that's being created by the improvements that are being done there. That is a serious concern when they're talking about a project that should be completed in twenty twenty. So I just don't want lives to be in danger as a result of this project. I'm also, I have seen that area when it was clear cut. And, uh, I would hopefully expect the developers to provide some sort of a, a buffer. We have very large, you know, sixty-year-old hardwoods that are growing in that area. And it has created a wonderful, uh, buffer between us and what could be a development that will have residential, uh, retail, and hopefully some loud fans over at the stadium. So I would like for it to, uh, bring that up as a point as well. I think this is a good project for East Ridge. But one of the things that absolutely has to be done is that we have got to have a venue for public input. And, um, as we've seen before, when East Ridge went through the fiasco of having letters sent out to people and a lot of rumors flying about what was happening, and you ended up having to dissolve one of the boards because of misinformation or scare tactics. Um, I'm hoping that we could agree to appoint some citizens who are directly impacted by this so that we have a, um, a conduit for communication to the community about what is going on without... I have already heard in Lansdale Park that they're gonna buy up our houses. So, uh, I, I'm just concerned about that and I would like to see, I want to be an ambassador for what I see as a project that is good for our area and will bring in a lot of good businesses and a tax base that we can have for a long time to come. But that's not going to happen if we don't have a conduit for the communication that will be desperately needed on a project that is the biggest that East Ridge has ever seen. So that is my areas of concern, and, uh, I hope you will take those to heart.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Thank you.
That would be City Council, but we can make that recommendation to the City Council. I would like to see us do that sometime before this is adjourned.
So, adjourned? I was gonna say, quickly, I can tell you what's changed is the Tax Act has made that economically viable to develop. And that Tax Act has been applying residential houses. So it would take a stretch to think they would be buying at homes, just my thought. But they, uh, she does make a good point about the two-lane road. Um, and that's something I'd like to discuss after, after you speak.
Hey, now, sir, I'm Dr. Edward Varner. Um, I didn't realize my, my mom is her neighbor on Schofield Avenue. And, uh, I grew up there, and so I hope I never, yeah, I hope I never caused any damage to your house or anything. Uh, anyways, if you're on that, anyway, um, I just wondered, is there a conceptual graphic of the, of the, of the area? Can that be shown to the, um, shown to everyone? And there is a concern that, um, will our houses be, uh, purchased? Or my mom's trying to decide what to do with them, her home right now, so that's all I have.
Well, I don't think anyone can buy your home unless you're willing to sell it.
Right, uh, so...
Just asking that question.
Yeah, that's what my mom's nervous about, that's the only thing. So, uh, I just wondered, can we see a graphic? I'll have the original development graphics, that one up. Oh, is it? Oh, thank you. Oh, I see. That is from right up to Schofield Avenue, so... Interesting. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Okay, uh, I'll get there for one, I promise, I'll put, I think, I saw a fingertip right over the legs there.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Hadley, and I moved onto the sixty-five oh eight Holiday Drive in Lansdale Park. And I've just been there a year this month, and I love that neighborhood because I feel like it's kinda cut off. It's not, love so much East Ridge, you just drive from one end of East Ridge to the other through all the side streets and everything. And, um, my grandkids come to visit me, and I feel like they can ride their bikes safely around that little neighborhood. And there's a lot of children in the neighborhood, younger than my grandchildren, who are always out on the roads. So my concern, I don't see, I just heard about this Saturday from some neighbors, so I don't know exactly what it's all entailed in. But my main concerns are that it's not somehow gonna connect streets into our neighborhood. And also that, so that wouldn't, there wouldn't be a way to create either more car traffic through the neighborhood or, um, even foot traffic. You know, that there's some kind of barriers where people can't be coming into our neighborhood, walking through house backs up to Ringgold Road. I don't have a fence along the back right now, so I already have people coming through my backyard to get, I don't know where they're going. But my, my main thing is I just wanted to stay in this quiet little neighborhood. And, um, and I, yeah, I think it's awesome that East Ridge is growing. I'm sure it'll help my property value, and I'm not worried about that at all. I just like, you know, I bought, I bought it, that neighborhood because I really like the quietness of it and the fact that there's no way for, there's no reason for people to be coming through my neighborhood. So I feel like the kids are safer there. So I just wanted to express that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
This one's down the short side right here. My name's Pamela Rance. I live at sixty-twelve North Avenue. Uh, I got the notice today, and, uh, my concern is, I'm sure that this has been in the planning stages for some time because I know they have to work to get incentives, things of that nature, uh, to see if they wanna develop in our area. And I grew up in East Ridge, graduated from East Ridge High School, uh, it doesn't matter what year, but I did graduate from there. And so, uh, in January of this year, I moved back into East Ridge from Georgia. One thing was because of the taxes. So then I saw that it went from R one to C four. And what I wanna know is, is it gonna increase my property taxes to a commercial zone property tax? When I've only got a residential property? And, um, I'm certainly willing to sell it if they want to pay it out, because I just bought it in January. So, uh, I was pretty concerned. I'm right there at the Spring Creek area. And, uh, it's already hard to get in and out of that place already. And, uh, I just kinda felt like that the city maybe should have notified buyers and sellers that there was intention of this property to be developed. And I know that they said that they weren't planning on developing, but, you know, you're gonna wanna have shopping centers, hotels, retail stores. And it brings a lot of business into East Ridge, and I'm all for East Ridge, you know, boom, and I don't want it to get to booming, but... So that's my concern, is it gonna change my property taxes if it goes to a commercial to C four?
So it, it won't rezon your property to commercial? Your, your property as a residential will remain residential? This is only rezon that portion of...
That portion?
The sixty-six acre, sixty-one acres that, uh, uh, joins that?
Well, this mentioned like the hundred foot, so then that brings up another question as far as I'm concerned. Whenever they build this development up and already buy the theme of zones, I have to have flood insurance. So is that gonna make the flood burst over there? Should they flood again?
You're only gonna be looking at, uh, you're only gonna be looking at building on forty acres, twenty acres. It's gonna be difficult to build on, so they're probably gonna have to use that more for floodway here or water retention. Water runoff from the development.
Well, of course, that water gonna run out too from the building whenever they need retention, because they're gonna have to elevate it at some point. You know, there's the school over there, there's church over there, there's the dialysis hospital. You know, a lot of things over in that area already.
I would, I would defer that to the engineer, Matthew.
Well, that's my question and concern. Like I said, it's for sale if they want to develop and pay it out.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Judy Willard. I live at fourteen thirteen North Street. Right in the middle. The upper end I know is commercial, and I know they're wanting to rezon the bottom, that it floods. Have you ever worked twelve hours and tried to get home at night with a heavy downpour and had to drive three routes to get in our house?
I don't think I have.
Well, it gets bad. Have you stood on your front porch and watched the water ebb and flow?
Not my porch, but I've been on other porches when the...
My cousin's house was completely flooded. It's all right down there at the end of the street. The retirement home has been flooded. They're not talking about that end of, they won't test it, and they won't develop. That's where the water comes. It comes up behind the houses across the street. What's gonna happen? Uh, did you, this last bad rain, how many went out and drove through East Ridge? See the water? See the water that was where that man's wanting to build those, build those, the housing homes? You should've went down and seen bullets, bricks, speedway, all that property and underwater behind where he's wanting to build. You need to look out and see at these bad ones, not by what the engineers say, but what really happens. The floodwaters is bad. The levee helped. But my cousin lives in fury every time there's heavy rain. How, how the creeks going crest because it comes up. That'll, the, how to do places, right where they're gonna be looking. And I know it's wetlands, and I know they're supposed to do, preserve it. But how many people do what they're supposed to do? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Beverly McCurdy. I live at one thousand Spring Valley Drive, which is just right across the creek from where they're gonna develop. I've been flooded several times, up in the house on Golden Pond a couple times. And the lady that was just up here is absolutely right. Now, the concern I have is flash flooding. Normally, I don't get too much flash flooding, but I do when hurricanes come up, do this one. I had like nineteen inches in my house, and it has a crossface. It was over my head on the far side, next to the wheelers. They get flooded before I do. And they're in a two-story home, so fortunately, theirs doesn't get flooded on the top. But everybody that's been up here so far has given my sentiments. And, uh, and I do think... And I do think you need to look when it rains. And like I said, mine is just, the property is just right across the creek. So that's something I'd really like for somebody to watch. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Zach McRath, I live on two oh six Hope Crest Avenue. So I'm echoing what others have shared about, concerned about removal of land that is right now naturally absorbing a lot of the rain. When rain comes, land that has trees and vegetation on it slows the progress with which the rivers actually get into the sewer system. Which, if the sewers are already kind of running over capacity, the longer that we, that areas of floodplains and wetlands can delay that, the less severe the impact is on our sewer infrastructure. So I'm curious, just because I'm reading articles about post-development, I haven't heard, I haven't seen anything so far about, you know, what are sort of the, what's sort of the larger plan in terms of what particular impact are, is it going to be on the wetland and floodplain area? And just, there's a tremendous amount of work that it takes if you're going to try to maintain some of that, that same effect that natural wetlanded floodplain areas already do to prevent that acceleration of impact on storm drains during storms. If you're going to try to make that artificially in the context of a commercial development, I think that's much, much more likely to have a severe impact on the rapidity with which a flood kind of accelerates into a neighborhood. Than if you have a, a residential area. So if we're building out, you know, land with yards and like where people are going to be planting trees and bushes and stuff like that, that's very different. When you rezonate to a commercial area, I just don't think there's any sort of, that there aren't enough restrictions in place on now, right now on things like large parking lots. Like there's no restrictions in place to say, oh, you're a floodplain, you have to have like a green lot that's going to absorb some of that rain. It's like, if you've got a gigantic parking lot that gets built, that is going to do tremendous, tremendous damage to that, that system. It's going to make it all look faster, there's going to be runoff into the area. So I'm just, you know, while we're not, may not be discussing the context of this, getting exactly what that development entails, I'm just concerned that just going ahead and saying, let's rezonate as commercial, whether it becomes a soccer stadium or it becomes, you know, a new shopping center, whatever it is. Like, I just, I don't think there's enough protections in place right now to make that not become an escalating crisis to our storm drain infrastructure. As well as just, what is the, what are the impacts of whatever that is on that, you know, that wetland area, the, you know, the ecological stuff, the ecological forces going on in there, you know, like animal, plant life. There's just not enough, I'm just concerned that there isn't enough visibility to what exactly that plan is going to entail right now. So just saying, well, let's go ahead and just move it to commercial, C4, and without having any sort of awareness of what, what kind of implications are in place in that area of impact. It's just kind of like saying, well, it's already done that, so now we can backtrack. We could go rezone it back, but I'm just concerned about taking that, that area with all of that, its impact as on the community potentially there and just going ahead and turning it to commercial to C4.
Thank you, sir.
I have some documents here.
Could you? You just state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Sandy Kurz, eighteen oh three Keller Street in Chattanooga. But I am chairman of the South Chicago Mall Creek Greenway Alliance. And we have met since nineteen ninety-four as a citizens advocacy group. And we meet in East Ridge at Wally's every month and always enjoy the food there, so I recommend it. This young man who just spoke kind of was a segue into my comments here. That the wetlands are more valuable than most people think. That they are providing us free services by sifting the water, holding the water, cleaning the water, and storing floodwaters. And as he described, just allowing them to slowly seep into the ground. And there's also the ecosystem, ecological system, wetlands are really valuable for the, our ecosystems and the support that we all need to have a quality of life. And so we are very concerned about this, this idea that we're going to take that wetland away. It is in the flood zone and the floodway. And even if what would be required is mitigation, you have to fill in the hole. You're going to fill in the hole, and then where is that water going to go? This morning, we went around and distributed this sign, some of you may have seen. How many got this? Mr. House? Sorry. We, and it says basically, have you got flood insurance? Because you're going to be, the people that live in that area, that lovely neighborhood there are going to have to deal with FEMA fear. And I'm just very, very concerned about that. You can see from the document I handed you that the wetlands described there, that is the property that's in question in black outline. And then the purplish color is the five hundred year floodplain. And the lighter blue is floodway and the hundred year flood level. These are FEMA estimates. Now, I don't know, this would be a great challenge to a hydraulic engineer and maybe ASO can look at these things. I know we're in that, that planning and design phase. We, South Chicago Mall Creek Greenway Alliance, would expect to be kept in the loop on any designs. Maybe something can be worked out, I have my doubts, but still, we would like to give our expertise over these years about the watershed and see what might come up. We would insist on an environmental impact statement, including the alternatives. Those are required for seeing if there's anything else you could do. Is there another place that we could put this that would still allow our flood system to keep on working, even though it's not perfect as it is? It needs to be, we need to dig another wetland, actually, rather than giving any away. We would expect an extensive hydraulic engineering study for the entire region that includes the I seventy-five corridor. Because that's, that's being changed too, and we're losing a bit of wetland over that on the other side. We want to ground truth the land. We'd like to walk in there and really look at it. And right now, it says no trespassing. What about the sewer system and the pressure on the taxpayers for that kind of thing? The cost of mitigation, if you, if you run a wetland, you've got to fill in the hole and then you've got to make another wetland somewhere at a two to one or four to one ratio that the state will tell us what they want us to do that way. And so that will be a cost, an extra cost to the building. I don't, the developer seems to be counting on these retail, commercial investors to make up the money that he's going to put in for building the stadium itself, which is probably the least expensive thing that might go in there. The massive amount of filter, where will it come from? Maybe that's that new wetland. The noise and the lights and those kind of concerns for the people in that, in that quiet neighborhood. So those are all things that we, South Chicago Mall Creek Greenway Alliance, feel that we should be involved in. And I will tell you this morning, as we went around and gave our flyers out, that people, people we talked to said, what is the rush? It seems like this is a secret effort somehow, that we are going to try to push this through as quickly as possible. Because it's so wonderful for East Ridge and economically, maybe it is, but I'd be interested in economic costs too. What is, what is the cost of flood mitigation or flood safety and those kind of things when the flood comes? And in this day and age, we're having more catastrophic storms. So I think we can expect more flooding. And Spring Creek is part of the watershed, is really, has flooded many times. As we heard some stories of that in this evening here.
Ma'am.
Am I three minutes up?
Well, I just didn't want to be rude and cut you off completely, but we do have several others.
That's fine. Well, that's basically, I just wanted to say that we've had a flood in two thousand three, we had a flood in two thousand nine. The creek crested at twenty-eight and a half feet. And there were evacuations in East Ridge. So I don't see the taking away of wetland that is a flood storage capacity place is going to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Okay, again. Go ahead, sir. Actually, what I want to do, is there anyone else? Some, okay. Because right now, I'm just going to have, if there's less than four or five of them, I'll have you go ahead and come on down and just get in line and we'll just try to. If you want to.
My name is James Els, I live over on Marion South, Marion Avenue. Been East Ridge resident for, oh, I was six years. In fact, my family was one of the first ones to set in East Ridge back some years ago. My concern is, is where they're going to be taking the wetlands and where the waters will go. Because I remember back when, Kenmore, the old Kenmore flood. Back when all that, that was before the lady. So, you know, just where is all that going to go? You know, I think they could break it up, kind of, they may put the stadium at one spot and maybe the condos and hotels might be close by or something. But, you know, we've got to have, we don't need to all just throw it all in one spot. Take the best proposal. Was an engineer for twenty years, so we're all at the latest that will do this. That's just my concern.
I do hope my home is in the flood. I completely understand, sir, thank you. Sir, did you want to?
My name's Matthew Fox and I'm one of the owners of East Ridge Residence at fourteen seventeen North Max Smith Road. And my question has to do with access. If it's rezoned as C4, is the access determined before it's rezoned or after it's rezoned? In terms of, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out. We talked earlier about a traffic study for as little as, I think it was seventy-three condos. Has a traffic study been done on this, if there's going to be this much traffic coming in and out for things? And really, my question is, when do the routes in and out get determined? Is it during this process or is it after it's rezoned? And how does that work?
It'd be, for this, for this property right now, we're looking at several different options. So it'd be through the planning phase. Like, so you can go through due diligence and like I say, I've said this a few times, go through zoning, but there's so much permitting, there's so many entities that have to be involved. So it'll all kind of work and fit together, but we don't have access down there. Looking at a couple of options. That's my question.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I see none, no one else, so we're going to close this public hearing. And this time, I have the engineer come back up front, maybe address some of these questions that we have. And I'll just go ahead and tell you, probably wise to emphasize on things like water, stormwater runoff and infrastructure. So that seems to be the main.
There was a common theme there. So this was a challenging site, without a doubt. You know, it is, you know, about a third of the site is in the floodway. There's additional areas of the site that you have to get the building pad one foot above the hundred year flood elevation. So there are some challenges with it. I'll try to address, kind of in the order that I heard them, and kind of go through the list, if that's okay. One of the concerns was traffic on Spring Creek Road. What I can say is that we plan to begin a traffic study as soon as school gets back in. Right now, there's that blackout period where school's not in, so you don't get accurate data. So once school gets back in, we will be doing the traffic study to see what implications the drip generation of the cycle generate, how it impacts the local roads. We have been in coordination with T-DOT, both on their I seventy-five, I twenty-four project. But then there's a future project coming up further down twenty-four. And we'll be sharing that traffic data with T-DOT so that they can make alterations to their design for some of the adjacent roads on twenty-four, the crossroads, including, I think, Max Smith, I think, is one of the roads that will be addressed. And then also some of the service roads. That's to be done as part of this process and determine the level of service to each road based on the drip generation. One of the questions was about buffers around the site. So the intent would be, and this is still early in the design process, but the intent would be, is any of the perimeter areas where there's existing residential or commercial, I think most of it's residential, is to maintain a landscape buffer in those areas, an undisturbed patch, so that you, it does buffer both visually and noise between the residential and the site itself. Home purchase concerns, I can't address that. One of the concerns was traffic through the neighborhoods. We are looking at ingress, egress design. What I can tell you is that we're not going to put a road or a look to one of the existing neighborhood roads as they stand now to dump all the traffic in there. So there shouldn't be concerns with, you know, I guess some of the residential areas experiencing a bunch of increased traffic. And also for the safety of the pedestrians going through there. During construction, we would look to access from the north Max Smith where it enters in on Spring Creek temporarily. You know, until all of that was nailed down, that would be kind of the general, the area that we would look for construction and traffic to ingress, egress. Plus flooding issues. Like I said, the site is a challenge. You know, we've got a lot of work to do, both in physically locating where the structures will be. That will be done in concert with both meetings with T-DAC and with the Corps of Engineers. You're going to have wetlands on the site, you'll have connected wetlands, you'll have isolated wetlands. Some that are just kind of isolated on the south end of the site are a little bit easier to deal with. The more high-quality wetlands on the northern part of the site is something that the owner would like to preserve as much as possible. I, until we get there and we get concurrence from the Corps of Engineers and from T-DAC, it's really hard to say exactly what the plan is. What I can say is that we would hope, if there is any mitigation, that it will be done onsite. And that in the end, there will be more wetlands on the site than what exists today. And also, from a stormwater perspective, like I said, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. But one of the things we'd be looking at is, is instead of doing a full-blown detention project, we'd be looking to do green infrastructure that would basically seep the water through and both reduce thermal pollution and also toxins from parking lots. So that would be our approach. There's a long way to go, we're step one of a hundred. And a lot of that will be dudged out in the planning and the design process.
So, just got a question. I mean, after you do all your due diligence and all of your studies, if you had, without a doubt, any question in your mind after you do your due diligence, that this was going, this development was going to affect the nearby residents in terms of water runoff, would you pursue?
Well, I don't think that we can do that. So we've got to demonstrate that we're not going to flood other people out. The development cannot impact other people legally. And we're going to follow the rules and regulations, the laws that are in place, and work with the regulatory agencies to make sure that all the eyes are dogged and all the teds are crossed. It is our hope. And we're doing this in other areas of the city where we're implementing stormwater parks, basically, that take water offline and temporarily hold it. They filter it and they clean it, and then slow releases back into the system. We're looking at those as options. We're looking at those as options for the site as well. And then some of the work we're doing on Ringled Road, when we're looking at stormwater parks, also affect this watershed. We're looking to take water offline, store it temporarily, filter it, and slow drip it back into the system, so that when that peak rain period has come and gone, it's still slowly raining down, so it's not, it's actually benefiting downstream by not dumping all that water at once. And we're looking at that as options for the site. We recognize the challenges with it, and we know that it's going to take some innovative thinking, and it's going to take a lot of collaboration with T-DAT and with Corps of Engineers, and the owner is committed to do it.
Thank you. Anyone, our fellow commissioners, have any questions? Do I hear a motion to...
I make a motion to be approved.
A motion to approve.
I have a concern. When we notified, if I look in around that area, most of the people out there just received their notice over the past couple days.
I haven't received one yet.
And we really don't, I don't think any of the public or select few has seen what kind of development is proposed on this, at least in conceptual, to know where their houses are located and where the buildings are to go. And is that a true fact that I'm stating?
Yes.
What I'd like to see is a rollover of 30 days to give the residents in that area an opportunity to have dialogue with city staff, with planning commission members, but also to be able to see what the conceptual plan is, so they have an idea of where the house is located and where the commercial development's going or residential development's proposed. I know a lot of that is going to have to be shifted around due to the studies that are going to be done beyond Corps of Engineers and T-DAT. And the commercial development that shows on the conceptual plan may or may not be able to be developed because of, like, and water runoff problems that we generate. But I'd like to see this rollover for 30 days to give the residents out here an opportunity to do some homework today, would like to see, get some of the questions answered, and then bring it back in July, give consideration. I like the development, but I want the public to feel comfortable with it, and at least have an idea of what is proposed to be developed there. Also, I like the idea, too, of suspending for public input conduit, and I would certainly like the planning commission to recommend to city council that, you know, maybe any study group be put together, developed, to work with them and make sure that their concerns are being looked at. That's all I have.
Kenny, what? Getting a response to that?
Yeah, so all the notices were announced as proper as it is for the property that was noticed. A lot of the notices that were sent out, that were sent out, were actually hand-delivered today by someone. Okay. And that went to, I think somebody spoke from Hillcrest, I'm not sure that's even here. And so that was for something, that was...
And I appreciate that. I know what Tom Hoss said, and with his 300 feet, but, you know, for the five acres or 10 acres rezoning is one thing. Talking about 62 acres with a multimillion-dollar development being developed here, I don't know what price tag on this is set at, but it's 125 million, 125 million dollar development on 62 acres, I think, and people should have little opportunity to digest this.
Water has no boundaries, it's free.
I understand that.
So...
I don't make the mistake...
I, no, and I appreciate that, and I know that it's going to be challenging over there.
But I want the streets to develop, across the way they develop.
We want, we want good development, and I agree with you on that. And, well, I work for the city for a short term, and I have walked that 60 acres. I know what the challenges are, and they're heavy, they're heavy. A lot of what's proposed may not be able to be developed, but we can get some good development in there, beneficial to this city.
But you know, there is somewhere...
I will just put my opinion out there, we have a developer here that's, he's, he played the state, it's one out of 100 phases that he has to go through before he starts breaking ground between all the studies and due diligence. So I feel confident that that will take place, and that this is only the very beginning of what's going to happen. So I share everyone's concerns with the flooding. I live in East Ridge as well, I'm out there with you. So, again, like I said, I feel confident that the developer here is going to do some more due diligence there, and I'm not opposed to what you're proposing. However, I don't want to stall things up any much longer than they're going to be stalled up, because they're already going to be going into the due diligence phases. So I guess if, if you had to be more specific, if we need to present something materialized, present something to the residents, from what Mr. Miller's suggesting.
Well, simply, it's the last page of our agenda. Anybody out there has seen this? This basically gives a conceptual of where things are located in relation to the streets that these people came up and talked about. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about a full site plan, we don't know the full site plan, we're not there yet. The site plan will be developed based on the due diligence that's done. However, this is a conceptual plan, which is the residents' idea of what's being developed, or proposed to be developed.
Mr. Chairman, also, if we, okay, if it passes, it still has to go to city council for two votes.
Correct. Kenny?
And that information, the drawings that we have seen could be posted here, and more anyone that presents, they can come in, anytime that the city hall is open, either more than welcome to come in and look at it. Like you say, after they do these studies, they may not look like that.
So, we got a motion to approve with some suggestion there. I think we did, we want to amend the motion, or did it...
Well, if, if, if my colleague will withdraw that, I would make a motion to roll this over for 30 days to give residents an opportunity to take a look at the conceptual plan.
The only question I have with that, with the development engineer, if we roll it for another 30 days, is this going to slow you down, or are you waiting for another 30 days to see about proceeding?
I can't answer from an engineering perspective, I don't know how it impacts the owner in the contract to purchase the land and the due diligence, you know. So typically, you agree to buy a piece of property, you have a period in which you have to do all of your due diligence and you put money upfront. And if you don't get it done in that period, you have to make the decision to either take the risk and buy the property, not having done all of your due diligence, not knowing if this body will approve the rezoning, if he goes through that and purchases the property and doesn't get rezoned in proper accordance. So, you know, I can't answer for the owner. What I can say is that he is under a contract period.
Suggestion, maybe, motion to approve, not just suggestion here, maybe a motion to approve to possibly contingent upon a more comprehensive plan being...
No, it doesn't have to be a comprehensive plan, it has to be this plan. It's conceptual.
Are you suggesting maybe share this online, to where the residents can actually see what's currently...
That would be helpful, sure, absolutely. I don't know whether it would, I believe the whole agenda was on the, what's the decision website?
Yes.
Usually, others are...
Okay.
I didn't check, so I can't say for sure.
Kenny?
We can provide more information to the residents as it moves through the process. The second reading and public hearing, if passed, is scheduled for June 23rd.
Let me ask, what's the first, okay, if it's approved tonight, what's built before the city council on first reading?
13th.
13th, and then you're talking to...
23rd.
27th?
23rd.
Okay, 13th and 27th, council.
And Kenny, is there something that we can put together, maybe something like this, and have a stack of them here at city hall? If it's something that we can't, if they can't obtain it online, can they come down to city hall?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, the council's got two readings, and that's, we know right now that those are the readings before the city council, on June 13th, first, and June 27th, second. Those are from them?
It's depending on tonight.
Tonight, okay.
Whether you approve or not.
Okay, if we prove it tonight, then it goes to 13th to 27th. So these residents would still have an opportunity to take this information and then... Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, a little quieter than normal, I'm not feeling 100%, so I'm sorry for shaking your hand, Mr. Ringer, but we'll watch that later. But you, one of our concerns, obviously, in East Ridge, every concern is water and traffic. It's the only two concerns we share as a city. And this is a, from my perspective, the planning commission, we have a split zone property that's in the border region, and it's, right now, it's four different zonings. We're talking about doing it to one, and everything else would still have to happen. So I'm not educated enough to be able to make an engineering decision about what's going to happen with the floodwater. All I know is right now, it's four zones. It should be one zone according to the designation it's already been given, and everything else would need to happen. This is just sending it to the city council, who needs to make a decision. So I share the concerns. I've lived in pretty places in East Ridge, and until I got smart and bought a house in the hill, they always flooded. So I understand, you know, I've sat in traffic with everyone else, but I think, from my perspective, this is just about, is the land suitable for the use in which it's intended? And from the recommendations of the RPA, I'm perfectly fine, in my conscience, to send this to the city council and have everybody have any time between now and that second reading, that's in almost a month, to make that decision. So, I fully agree. I think St. Mark's Bridge needs to be looked at, I understand the preservation, Chickamaun Creek, and I was born and lived here my whole life, you know, this is, I understand the challenges of the city, but we're just talking about sending this to the council, so...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I know the public hearing is over, but if it's just about going to the city council and wants the rush to do the zoning change?
We, if we don't make a recommendation, then that just takes it off city council's agenda. I'm not in any rush, I don't belong to the city council, but it just moves it off the agenda. I mean, I don't understand what maybe that 30 days really does, because we've got 25 days until the second reading. So I think, to me, that's enough time, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm being paid by the developers, I'm not part of the city council, I'm just saying, right now, we've got four zones, it should probably be one zone, have one piece of property, the four zones, it's silly to me. And if you come to any council meetings, every single meeting, I say, can you assist another split zone property? Can we fix that and make it one zone? That's my perspective from the planning commission. And I understand your concerns, I share them, I hope everybody will continue to voice their opinions, they're council people, but from my perspective, from the planning commission, it's about the property and its designated usage.
And not to mention, you also look at another public hearing. So for the second reading, there will be a different public hearing, similar to what you just had today, but from the city council.
And so was that the 13th and the 27th of June?
Correct.
Because that's 10, what, 10 in two weeks, 10 days, two weeks?
So the public hearing will be at the second, the last meeting of June.
Which is the 27th, so that's about three and a half weeks.
And this will be shared to all, all whom wants a copy? So you'll have time to review it, and then if you have some additional concerns during the second reading, we'll have that public hearing in the second month, second city council of the month.
Just one question, how and when will that be shared specifically?
Well...
We can place it on our website, like we do everything else, we can do a social media push, and let everybody know where the documents will be located, and then we'll provide packets here, so you know.
I think the practice of city halls, great, because there's a lot of people who don't have that on.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've done that for other, in the past, different topics, events, and schedules, and developments, that we've put a packet together, maxed together, and had it at your city hall, and one of our staff members would actually review those with you. So we can answer as many questions as possible. And then if it's something that we couldn't answer for you, then we can just take those down, kind of like I did tonight, and provide that information to the engineers, and get back with you with them, and hopefully to address these some concerns.
I think that's a wise concern, and I think that's a wise way to discuss.
Mr. Miller, did you have anything else? Okay. Okay, so right now, we have a motion to approve. Go ahead, a second.
We're going to be doing, putting it on our website and everything regarding this, right? Okay, second.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? Brokoff, please.
Mission member Miller?
Yes.
Mission member Renner?
Yes.
Mission member Togo?
Yes.
Chairperson Chauncey?
Yes. Okay, that's everything on our agenda tonight, folks, thank you for coming, this meeting is adjourned.